Good evening. Welcome to the City of Rochester's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Today is August 11, 2025. City Clerk, the real call, please.
Xavier.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage.
Trent.
Here. We have a quorum. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us here tonight on this beautiful, warm August evening. So tonight on our agenda, we are going to start with public comments. And so I'm going to open this for public comments. These are for public comments for anything that is not on the agenda. But before I do that, I do have one housekeeping item that I would like Council to consider. Administration has asked if we could pull Agenda Item 9A under Regular Business. They need to do some additional work on it. So City Clerk, do I need a motion to pull that from the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. So 9A will be pulled from the agenda. So if you're planning to make a public comment on that or wait for that, I just wanted you to know so you don't have to wait for that. So having said that, we'll move on to public comment for anything that is not on the agenda this evening.
Good evening. Dr. Atala.
Thank you, Doc. Good to see you. Could you please state your address, please?
I am here for 543 North Main, 134 West University, and 530 Pine Street. So I'm going to start by an introduction a little bit here, and then I will go to my presentation, slide presentation. So tonight, I was invited here by our city manager, McBanda, to explain to City Council the maintenance work that I've been doing on my property. A parking lot just so next to City Hall. I applied for an electrical permit with our electrician last week. He was told that they will have it within a day or two days and so on, but it was, we didn't get an answer, so it was denied. Not because anything was wrong with the electrical plans, but because the city wants to stop my work. Actually, the issue, a stop work order, just after I saw that day our city manager. Few hours ago, I received a text from Mr. Banda outlining the penalties, including fines, misdemeanors for not getting a new site plan approval. As you know, the city has been pushing me for years to do improvements in my buildings The garage, the parking lots, and lately that banner that was on the west side of the walkway leading to Silverstone. That was destroyed by an accident, a car accident essentially, and the bricks and the cinder block was all dismantled and so on. So I've been just doing this. My position today is that I do not need to apply for site plan approval. I am maintaining my property. Nothing under Article 27, Site Plan Approval, Section 2700 applies exactly to me. Also, I'm doing what is allowed under Accessory Use. Accessory use can be approved by the city manager or designated without site plan approval. In fact, I have been told repeatedly that I did not need to go to Planning Commission, and I did not need permits because we're doing maintenance. I have met with the city manager more than once. Fire chief John was always present on the property to encourage us. He met actually even a lot of the contractors that we tried to get in here, and he was encouraging. But they did tell me that he was under stress because it was very important that we complete the work. So I ask, nobody ever said I was violating the existing site plan. The site plan is the same. We always had. This is something new. By shutting this job down, I will be losing thousands of dollars. Actually, today is August 11, and today was the day where the company parking box was supposed to come in and start putting the kiosks and so on. So I notified them that we're not going to be able to do that without electricity and so on. We don't have internet. We don't have anything. So obviously, with the contract, it's clearly stipulated penalties and cost, and it's not pennies. Right now, I'm gonna, this is for this, so I can go and try to go through. So the issues that are concerning is the stop work order. Of course, we want to speed, and now we stopped for no reason. I mean, I met Mr. Banda that morning on Wednesday, and when I went down to Birmingham and came back, Officer Taylor says, you know, you're going to get a stop order if you, you know, don't stop everything. So we stopped everything. Then my dear friend Jeremy comes in and tells me he was going to Silver Spoon to put the stop work order, and I told him, no, just take it to our Adco office, and that's what happened. So the other issue is the Planning Commission review, like I said, according to these articles that I mentioned, and I will do actually a more detailed one at the end. So where do we go from there, my dear?
There's only one page in there.
Is Jeremy here? Jeremy, where do I, oh, here we go. Got it. All right. Doesn't want to open?
This is JPG.
Keep it a double click.
Yes, that's what I'm doing. Okay.
I think he's trying to open it.
Well, maybe it was the right thing, and see, open.
He wasn't trying to open it.
Da, 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 da.
Violation light? That one's up. I think he's trying to.
It may be.
Yeah, Jeremy, could you help with this, please?
The work, okay.
Because he's in, that's Word.
No.
So you need to open a Word doc and Word.
I don't know if we can open JPG.
It would be opening in preview. Okay, yeah. Those are JPGs. Those are images that he's trying to show?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have those. But like you saw, the issue is that.
You need to open with.
Yeah, you need to get out a Word, I think.
You do.
Yeah.
You need to get out a Word to open up images. Yes, this is a PC, so we, oh, well, I guess photos, yeah. Yeah, but those are not all the images.
They're not open.
Those are JPGs.
I feel better about my tech skills now.
Okay.
There's a 13-year-old in the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not familiar with PCs. Okay.
Okay, at least we can start with, if you don't mind me approaching you guys, I would like to come give you some copy of what you're seeing on the screen there.
Certainly. Yeah, give it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
So as you can see here, the site plan is the same one we had since we built 543 North Main. The only thing we added right now is the islands. You see them in red. One on Main, two on the east and west of 134. The arrow indicates the traffic that is coming. And finally, on Pine, you can see again the entrance in blue, and on the other side, you see the exit for, mostly for the truckers and so on, bigger things, but everybody, of course, can use it. So I think those things are not essential or change to the parking or anything. The parking is there. We're just making it controlled, and we need to make it controlled because 40 years we've been letting people come in and go in, and they do what they want to do, and that's wear and tear. And, you know, so we need to repair that. We need to keep it on. So the parking has been in our talks for a long time, and now we're ready to do it in our property. And the islands are really 14, some of them feet in length and 18 inches in width, and that's about it. I would just like to, Jeremy, get to that final thing there, since we cannot open the other things. Do you want to give me the conclusion on that? That's fine. Try it. This is what we obtained by really studying that ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and the ordinance language provides that the proposed kiosks, gates, bollards, and islands fall within the 2700, I stated before, but under C1A, Administrative Review Pathway for Accessory Uses Incidental to an Existing Conforming Use, and do not trigger Planning Commission Site Plan Review under 2700B3. This is new construction or under 2700B7, which is excavation over 15 cubic yards. The word, the work does not create a new building, does not alter the lots, create a new, no, lots, principal use, and maintain existing ingress and egress. This reading is reinforced by Article 39 definitions and by a narrower interpretation of 2404, which appears in, at new or substantially reconfigured parking lots. So we are right now here. I'm just asking, because of the zoning ordinance, that I do not need to go to the Planning Commission review. We've done a lot of work on things. You encouraged us. You pressured us to fix things. We did it. I don't know. Repairing is not a violation. Repairing is keeping things the way, to update them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atala. Thank you for your, your public comment. As you know, and as most of our audience knows, we don't deliberate around public comments. It's an opportunity to provide comments. I think in this scenario, City Manager, we have received your revised site plans to be reviewed by Planning Commission, and there is a stop work order in place. And so, City Manager, if we could clarify exactly what that means?
Actually, Vidia is online, and she's the one that made the interpretation that disagrees with what Doc said. Vidia, you're there, right?
Yes. Give me one second, please.
Can we, I'm sure she's going to be on camera. If we could switch over to her, please?
Hang on one second. Vidia will get you on camera.
Okay. Can you see me?
Not yet. I'm going to get you in.
Okay. Can the Council hear me?
They can hear you.
Is your camera on, Vidia?
Yes, it is. The camera is on, and the audio is also on.
Okay. There you are. Now we see you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Dr. Atala cited Section 2700 of the zoning ordinance. He also mentioned Section 2404. However, Section 2404 should be read in its entirety, not just the initial portion of it. He is correct in his summation that the initial portion of that section deals with construction of new parking lots. However, the final paragraph of Section 2404 reads, and I'm reading it out of the ordinance language as written, "If the off-street parking lot is intended to serve office, business, or commercial uses, the parking lot and associated driveways shall be laid out to facilitate joint usage of driveways and circulation routes with adjoining property in the same block, soon for office, business, or commercial uses, with the intent of minimizing points of driveway access to major thoroughfares, increasing efficiency and safety of traffic circulation, and coordinating rate changes and drainage. The Planning Commission shall have authority to require the implementation of such joint usage of said driveways and circulation routes by appropriate legal documentation between or among property owners. It is a fact that this parking lot is existing and has been so for decades. However, the addition of the electronic kiosks and key-carded entry alters the circulation route not just on the site, but on the adjoining streets. Typically, traffic would turn in from Main Street into the site. The location of the electronic key-card access boxes would now require vehicles to actually stack up onto Main Street. We don't know what the impact is going to be in rush hour if you have 10 employees showing up at the same time trying to enter the site with their key cards to access their offices, and now you have a backup on Main Street. Same goes for University. These are the two main major thoroughfares through the city. It's not to say that Dr. Atala cannot add the electronic kiosks. However, this is not something that administration can approve, and the Planning Commission specifically puts access, circulation, and parking lot layouts within the purview of the Planning Commission only. It is not within administrative purview, per my reading of the ordinance, and Attorney Kraft can conquer the way the ordinance language is written. It's pretty clear the Planning Commission has a say in this matter. Thank you."
Thank you. City Attorney, anything you'd like to add?
No, I believe that the planner covered it well. That's the interpretation that was provided last week, and I see no reason to, to differ with that. That's key card and, and towers or kiosks, I mean, that's, that's a change to a site plan that's more than just, because it, we, part of the issue is the C doesn't know what the plan is when the work just starts. So that's, that's part of the issue is that, you know, verbally telling the city tonight at a meeting what the plan is, is different than the city looking at it and evaluating to see if this is appropriate. And the planner addressed the, the potential stacking issue quite well because we don't know what the plan is. It's not a change in use because it's parking, it's, it's going to stay parking. That, that wasn't the issue. I heard Dr. Atala say it's an, it's an accessory use, and, and I don't think that's been an issue. So I don't have anything more to add to this. Thank you.
Okay. So, so thank you, Doctor, and thank you for your pursuit of improved maintenance on this property. I think everyone is eager and happy to hear that that is a high priority to you. If we could also clarify, because I know there's been questions about what can you or can you not do on the property while the stop work order is in place? And so my understanding is you can mow the lawn, you can pull the weeds, you can sweep the, the driveways. So that is where we are currently at.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. Vidia, what we are doing is the same that we're doing or the city did with the platforms. When you come in, you just pull a ticket. When you leave, you put your card. It doesn't cause a traffic jam, and it's the same that's happening in your platform. We just took exactly what the city did, and we did it. And then we also put these things within the confinement of the property so we don't make jams, traffic jams on Main Street. So this was given a lot of thought and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this, this evening? Anything that is not on the agenda? If you could please approach, state your name and your address. Welcome this evening.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Nick DiMuro. I'm joined by my wife, Martha. Our address is 533 Wilcox Street, also joined by Carrie Briskin, and her address is 523 Wilcox Street. So we, we live next door to a rental property, and the owner has done a poor job of maintaining the property. In fact, it's overgrown, both in the front and the back. We, along with other neighbors, have reported the condition numerous times, but to no avail. I would say repeated violations of, of the ordinance. There's been no change really to the condition of the property, and it's still wildly overgrown, and, and of course, we know that it's a fire hazard, a rodent hazard, and it's really a blemish on the neighborhood in our community. I also did want to say how much we appreciate what the Council does to keep this community a great community. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, all three of you, for being here tonight. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Welcome.
Hi.
If you could state your name, please?
Deborah Larue. I live at 137 Wilcox Street. And I just thank you guys for whoever notified me for my letter that I wrote. I was concerned about what was going on at 543 North Main Street. And in looking around and talking to people, I heard gates or some sort of stop was going to go up on those, on that building in that parking lot. I find that a shame. It's a beautiful piece of property in a charming little town with real potential. However, the building itself is old, tired, and in urgent need of repair, which I'm glad to hear is happening. The landscape needs refreshing. The bricks are crumbling at the bottoms of steps. Some of the steps are missing large sections, which could be a safety issue, hazard, potential lawsuit. Some windows are broken, and I'm glad to hear that this is going to be handled. The one concern I have is about the gates. Gates, I don't believe, are a solution. I've heard from many community members who are already concerned about this, how this will affect access to local restaurants and businesses. Gates don't provide or create a positive first impression. In fact, they may actively discourage visitors. Gates are useful for industrial areas and prisons. There's a goal to keep people out. I don't know if that wants, if you want that to be a goal to hear. So the gates are, like I said, are useful for industrial areas and prisons. That's not the message we want to send our customers of restaurants, patients, medical offices, residents of this town. If I were running a business here in this complex, I certainly would consider relocating. Installing gates will do nothing to enhance the city or benefit this property. I'm disappointed that the construction had progressed as far as it had without the city noticing. This building is in close proximity to city offices and not under some obscure bridge. I find it hard to believe that construction beyond simple parking lot resurfacing was not noticed, and these platforms, to me, appeared to be something else going on. They installed 36, I think, steel poles with conduit for electricity. So that's something more than just simple parking lot maintenance. And even after the stop work order was issued, construction for the, for the install of the gates continued, and now it's ready for the gates. Along with watching this construction go on, I also witnessed dumping of excess cement in nearby woods. I think that was not supposed to happen. This is a family-friendly town. I hope that everybody considers this. They risk alienating, gates risk alienating people we want to attract. Instead of funds being far better spent restoring the building to its former charm, which it was, and potential, we don't need the gates. And I hope you guys will consider this when thinking of it. Some things I pulled up online about this clinic, and it's, it's, I don't know if these businesses are still there, but just some things that were said about it, but a private clinic specializing in primary care. This is all wonderful things it says. And it says, at the end, it says, "while keeping our patients happy and healthy." I don't think gates state that. A diagnostic and specialty center where there's x-rays and mammograms, stress testing, a warm and friendly environment. I don't think gates will state that. There's a vascular center there to help, and you look your best and feel your best. I don't think gates state that. But these are just some of the things I find kind of ironic, and now we're going to put up gates and have people pay for, well, I don't care what paid for parking, but it does. It makes a difference. It makes a statement, and it's not a positive one. I hope you guys will consider that.
Thank you. Next public comment?
Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. Just a couple of things. First of all, I will be honest with you. I've used Dr. Atala's parking lot quite a bit, and so have my friends, for the restaurants that are just south of it, because those restaurants have no parking, really. And I can't tell you how many times the cars have stacked up at the yacht club because of no parking. People go in, they think they're going to get into the driveway, they can't, and they're halfway in, brakes are on, and here we go. And what we've been doing usually, I'm going to be honest with you, if I go to La Fuma's, I'm parking in that other commercial parking lot, private entity that doesn't belong to anybody. And I'll tell you one reason why. There's no city parking around there to service that unless you're in private property. And there have been, over the years, tons of cars in both, and it's going to push cars even more to that other entity until they get upset and say, we don't want all the other traffic. We pay for this lot. The public doesn't. So then you're going to take your kids or yourself, you're going to try to walk, and remember, a lot of people don't know because that deck isn't really visible from university, but it's still a hike. And those intersections, take your life in your hands. These intersections right here down by Main, it is tough. So that's just something I think we have to think about in the future, is how do we help those small businesses that are successful, that have good food, and where do we put these cars? Because we're inviting more dense development with more people to attract to Rochester, wall-to-wall cars and wall-to-wall people, and no place to put the cars. And I will tell you, that lot, for years, everybody knows it, everybody parks in it, and that's been at Goodwill. It's put a lot of wear and tear on it, but I'm just saying, that is a problem. And cars stack up, cars stack up on the deck on the east side sometimes on a Friday night or Saturday or whatever. It's put a lot of wear and tear on it, but I'm just saying, that is a problem. And cars stack up, cars stack up on the deck, on the east side sometimes, on a Friday night or Saturday or whatever. They go to pull in, and they're just slow. Stack, stack, stack. Same thing with pulling out. You think you're going to pull out, and they're stacking, and you've got traffic coming through. You cannot pull out easy. It's just that one, and that's a problem. But we do stack cars up here, so that's nothing new. The next thing is the electric bikes on the sidewalk. I got a call from a friend, and they asked me if I could do them a favor, go to 423 and pick their phone up at 11 o'clock in the morning. It was waiting for them. They left it at our school reunion. We had a pre-reunion. They left it the night before. Their people were great. So I told them, "Not a problem. I'll be there right when they open to get your phone." And I did. And then I walked out, and then I had to jump back because in what you would consider the wrong lane, it's a recessed door. I would be going on my right walking, right side. Here comes a bike right along there going so fast, and he never stopped at all, never. If I hadn't jumped back, I would have been hit. Because you walk out, it would have been a right-on hit. Never looked, never stopped, and I can't tell you. So that's Main Street, and I'm questioning why we even have bicycles on the sidewalk like that. That is, that's getting dangerous with the amount of people we have and the people walking and the little kids. But it's little stuff, and I think it's just something we have to think about a little bit. I don't know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We have another public comment?
Good evening. Ann Peterson, 233 North Alice.
Good evening.
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Kane, for bringing that up. I almost got hit by somebody on an electric bike the other day, too, walking on the sidewalk. So they don't give notice, they don't do anything, so I think that's a problem. Plus, I've heard that multiple times from other people who are even walking their dogs. Two things, or three things, real quick. I know that zoning is on the agenda tonight and everything else, but also the blight ordinance. But I do want to make a comment before we get there, in case I have to leave. You know, we have a billion-dollar tax base. To sit here and talk about blight all the time is embarrassing to those who live here and spend money here and invest here. It's my personal comment. Second, I noticed that we're changing the ordinance for certain properties, it seems like, by giving extra frontage for porches and extra frontage for some other things within the ordinance. And I did not find anything in there regarding affordable or attainable housing. And I searched it. So I'm just wondering if that was going to be put in. Next, regarding Dr. Talas' comment there, Section 2404, if you read it at the beginning, it says for parking lots to be built. It has nothing to do with lots that have not been built yet. So I don't know if that wants to be changed for the future. Also, in the under-section, which one is that? That's regarding the residential zoning. You have in there that it is suitable environment for families typically with children. That is a huge fair housing violation, and I think you should think about taking that out. So I don't think, single-family housing does not mean families. It means anybody. And the Fair Housing Act of the United States covers fair housing for all, not for just with children. So that's very discriminatory, and I think it should be taken out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening have a public comment for something that's not on the agenda? I don't see anybody stirring, don't see any other movement. All right, we'll move on to our agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda. We have the minutes from our July 14, 2025, and our July 28, 2025, meeting. And we have a special event, application from CubPAC 188 to hold the Soapbox Derby on October 5 on East Third Street. I do know we have the applicant here, in case you want to say something about it and let the public know about it. And then Item C is receipt of the check register. Council, any action you'd like to take on the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Jones.
Support.
Support by Trent. Discussion?
Just one quick question. I assume Fire Chief is okay with it, given the location by the Fire Department?
Yep.
Good.
Historically, we've done it there. While we're deliberating on it, Dan, would you like to approach and say anything about this event? And you're bringing it back, right?
So, hello.
Welcome.
I'm Dan Drill from 149 Spruce Lane. Yeah, so we've actually, we brought it back after COVID-2022 and 2023. We were actually going to move the event to spring of last year. However, just fell through with construction plans, and we're happy to push our kids down the hill in these carts as safely as possible because we're liable for it.
Nice. And the public's welcome?
The public is welcome. We're not going to be selling anything, but if anybody does have any K- through fifth graders that want to participate, they can register through BeAScout.com.
Great. Thank you. City Clerk, the roll call.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. We have no old business. Moving on to public hearings. Item A is a public hearing for 210 diversion. This is a special project and site plan review revisions. So are we starting with Vidia on this one, City Planner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can get started.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I will share the site plan on the screen. The project before you tonight is 210 diversion. This is a project that the council has seen before. It received site plan and special projects approval from City Council in March of 2024 for the construction of a four-story, 21-unit, multiple-family residential building. Now, the site plan was, at the time, the special project was recommended by the PC, and it was accepted by the City Council. During the process of designing the final plans for construction, the applicant made certain changes to the plan. Now, these changes were not so minor that they could be handled administratively, and since the ordinance is not very clear that when a special project plan is changed, whether it can be handled administratively, to err on the side of caution, we decided that they should go through the correct process again to present the changes to the planning commission and then come back before council. The applicant did come before the planning commission on July 7 and received a recommendation for approval. I will summarize the changes in brief. The biggest change on this project is the fact that the applicant has increased the size of the balconies on the west side of the building by 1.5 feet. Since the building was already built to the property line, this resulted in an encroachment of the balcony onto the adjacent property to the west. Now, the adjacent property to the west is the preserves, which is also owned by the applicant, but it is not a sound planning practice to have an encroachment of a structure over another property. So the applicant is proposing to transfer 1.5-feet-wide strip of land from the preserves to 210 diversion to ensure that all portions of the building remain within the boundaries of 210 diversion itself. They have also expanded the balconies on the south side of the building, but that is well within the applicant's property lines itself. So this is a significant change. In addition to this, on the west side, there will be a permanent 8.5-foot-wide access easement, which will help this property maintain all of the balconies and the landscaping that are going on the west side of the building. So this will be a permanent maintenance easement that will be recorded. Now, the property transfer and the easement need to be recorded before any construction permits are issued. With regard to vehicle access, that remains unchanged. The site is accessed of diversion. It's a two-way access drive. There is surface parking, and there is, on the first level of this building, there are some parking spaces available. The applicant has not made any changes to the onsite circulation pattern itself. At the time this project was originally approved, a detailed traffic impact study was done, and the findings did not recommend any changes in the nearby streets. Whatever changes were included as part of the study were implemented on the site plan itself. With regard to pedestrian access, no changes are being made from the original approved special projects plan, which includes a sidewalk connection five feet wide along the entire frontage of the site that connects to the sidewalk on this side, and a sidewalk for the preserves will be on the west side to which it will connect, creating a continuous pedestrian walkway. With regard to architecture, I'll go to the elevations of this project. The main changes in addition to, this is a perspective of the building, I'll go to, to give a better elevation detail. The main change on the building facade, in addition to the balconies, is the change the applicant had to make to the height of the building because of the elevator shaft. The elevator shaft now projects about 22 inches above the flat roof. This was essential in order to comply with building codes. The applicant has still submitted a cross-section diagram, as was required, to show buildings for several blocks on either side to ensure that even that projection above the flat roof is not going to be imposing on any of the surrounding buildings, and the rates and the height has got no impact. The applicant has made minor changes in terms of eliminating a window on the east facade on the third level, fourth level. This is because of the internal floor plan and the way it is laid out, a window was not functional. The other minor change made was on the south facade, where previously for the underground parking, this area had a grill feature. The applicant has eliminated the grill in lieu of providing open spaces to improve the circulation in the underground parking area and keep it more open and airy. There is no change to the actual tree removal on the site. The applicant is not removing any additional trees beyond what was originally approved. There is no change to the lighting plan either. The one significant change that was made on the plan, I will go back to the site plan sheet itself. The applicant eliminated a trash enclosure, a dumpster enclosure that was shown on the southeast corner of the site. The dumpster enclosure was eliminated in favor of providing an interior trash collection room. So all of the trash from the various units will be deposited in the trash room. A trash pickup vehicle will pull in, pick up the trash, make the turnaround movement, and exit the site. So the exterior trash enclosure was eliminated, and a single garage building was split into two separate buildings with an eight-foot-wide landscape green area in the middle. Overall, the site complies with the required amount of parking. There is one additional interior parking spaces and two fewer surface parking spaces, but the site is complying with the ordinance standards for parking. As a special project, the applicant is required to demonstrate public benefit. The public benefit as a refresher for the council, originally when the applicant proposed a public benefit, the project was approved as a sidewalk connection along diversion extending to the overpass, allowing for access to Main Street via the new stairway. New lobster apartments contributing to pedestrian traffic and customers to downtown business and contributing to the tax base. In addition, with the amended plan, the applicant is providing an additional public benefit in the form of 182 feet of new water main. So this is a public infrastructure improvement that the applicant is providing, again, as a public benefit. At this time, we believe the amended plan does not significantly deviate from the design of the original special project itself. So it is our recommendation that the City Council grant amended special project approval to 210 diversion, subject to the four conditions that are listed in the McKenna Review Letter dated June 30 of 2025. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Vidia before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Jones?
Hi, Vidia. I just had a quick question about the sidewalk. So the sidewalk is going to go to the steps that are by Chief Financial, correct?
Correct. It's going to go all the way to provide a connection to the stairway that goes up to Main Street.
And is that all property, then? Like, whose property is that? Like, that goes under the viaduct? Is that their property or city property?
M dot.
City manager just said that.
It's M dot, yeah.
So, and that's fine?
Yes.
We need approval to get there?
We had that approved in the previous plan.
Okay. Okay. That was it. Thanks.
Council, anything else? All right. So we will now open the public hearing. It is 7:44. If anyone here in the public would like to speak on this project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Jim Epic. I'm with J. Epic Planning. I'm here with Joe Lachirco, the applicant. I won't belabor the point. I appreciate Vidia's thorough review. Basically, at the end of the day, we just, as we go from site plan approval to file construction, we looked at really two different categories. How do we make the project better from a usability and livability point of view? And so we did things like enlarge the balconies, internalize the trash containers, break the garage apart to make it a little more architecturally interesting. We added one additional completely ADA accessible unit, so that required a little bit of modifications to the windows and some of the entrance ways. And then we did some structural fine tuning, things like that. As Vidia pointed out, the elevator shaft required an additional 22 inches just within one portion of the building. We modified the garage design a little bit to add an additional accessible unit, parking spot within the garage unit, and as we pointed out, added that 182 extra feet of water main improvement. There's already water main out there, but as we started investigating from a utility point of view, as we're tapping into it, it just made sense to upgrade it for the good of the city and certainly the good of this project. So we're happy to do that. Appreciate the consideration. We're still full steam ahead. We've submitted to Eagle. We have delivered to the city for their initial review, the various easements and things like that. So we'll continue to work together and look forward to construction.
Thank you. Can you remind me, how many units are in this?
We have a total of 21 units. About 15 of them are about 1,000 square feet, and then seven are about 1,500 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there any public comment online? I don't think there is. No?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Thank you, Brian. We're in the public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:46. Councilmember King?
Sorry, I did have a couple of questions for Vidia, I guess. There was a comment about the landscape is in a right-of-way or city property. I'm just curious about the maintenance plan. Is it still on the property owner to care for that landscape?
Yes. So diversion is rather unusual in front of the subject site. As it curves along, there is this little no-man's zone that actually belongs to the city, even though the subject property is located in the back over here. So the landscaping that is being installed in this, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I wasn't sharing the screen. Apologize. Let me just put it back on the screen.
We see it now.
So, yeah. So this triangular portion of the area, this actually is located within the right-of-way. It is a very unusual configuration because the right-of-way for diversion comes straight, and then it pops down and picks up this area and then continues this way. So the applicant is required to provide landscaping in the front, which they are doing. However, it happens to be located within the city's right-of-way. The applicant, I believe, has obtained approval from City Council to do it. The responsibility for maintaining all of the landscaping and improvements in this area would be entirely on the applicant itself.
Okay. I, sorry, a couple other questions. I did notice, I think it was page 46 of, not the presentation, or of their portion of the deck, I showed the garbage truck, and it doesn't look like it turns around on the property. It looks like it pulls into the property and backs out and does some turning on diversion?
So this is the trash, let me just scroll down a little bit so I can explain. I'm going to minimize it a little bit. So this is the trash enclosure, trash truck movement. The screen is jumping. I apologize. So I'm going to go, this is the trash truck maneuvering. So the trash truck enters the site of diversion. It pulls in here. This is the overhead door through which the trash is brought out. Once it picks it up, the trash truck goes here. This is the opening to the parking in the first level. This is the interior parking area. The trash truck can go this way. It's going to reverse, and then it is going to head out on its way. The applicant has shown the turn movements in and through the middle of the site. They haven't continued the movement, but the truck will not be using diversion right-of-way for maneuvering. It's going to maneuver entirely within the site itself.
What is, what's the picture to the right, then, that shows maneuvering?
This is the fire truck maneuvering movement. This is for fire trucks.
Okay.
A fire truck typically, because it's larger, I don't believe Fire Chief would actually attempt even making this movement. If a fire has to be fought, the fire truck would enter and go right back.
Okay. Thank you. And then just my last question. I know that, I think we've recovered this before. I did see the storm drains, but I just want to Um, I did see the storm drains, um, but I just want to ensure all of the water retention, um, is maintained on site. There won't be water runoff to the streets.
I, I would defer to city manager Banda on the water, stormwater detention portion of it. He would be better positioned to answer that.
Yes, yes ma'am. Um, through the chair, uh, Councilwoman King, yes. So they have an internal, um, stormwater detention system, 100-year, back-to-back through Oakland County. That's what Joe was talking about, the, uh, Eagle permits, things like that. So everything will be maintained on this site, not using any public, um, right-of-way for storage.
Do we use any sort of like measurement for the size of the storm and the amount of water involved?
Yep. It's calculated on a square foot basis, rooftops, surface parking, all that. It's done through the planning commission. It's in the engineering report. So, so they take care of all that and you have to keep your water on your site, detain it. And then, um, actually release at an agricultural rate. It's 0.2 CFS they're allowed to put into the public sewer and that's how it's designed. So they hold it underground and then it gets, um, agriculture put into our sewer at the right rate. So we're good. There will be no water coming from the site onto our public driveway.
Okay. It just seems like we're having more of these 100-year storms.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if our ordinance is, or, you know, the way that we're allowing these to be engineered is enough to accommodate that amount of water or if it's for like a typical rain.
Yeah, actually, it's not typical. It's actually Oakland County is back-to-back hundreds. So they double what our normal 100-year storm is. So you could say we're having more than back-to-backs even lately. But that's, nobody in the state of Michigan has anything deeper than back-to-back 100 years.
That was it. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jones?
Just a curious question. Um, I don't know if it's from Vidya or, I just wondered how many one bedrooms and how many two bedrooms. And the fact that he mentioned one got turned into an ADA compliant, does that mean that there's more than one? I don't know if that's, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We'll have a total of 14 one-bedroom units and then two-bedroom units. And, uh, all of these are also designed to have, uh, a small home office type, uh, application as well. Uh, we originally approved the plan or presented the plan with one fully, uh, ADA compliant unit and now we have two.
Oh, okay. That's great.
Out of, out of the 21.
So, and 14 one-bedroom, you said?
Correct.
And then the rest are two-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay. Are there bathtubs in any of them? Just curious.
Are you shopping?
Yeah, that came up, that came up, uh, at the planning commission and, and Joe and his team, uh, at that, about a year ago, redesigned them and they have, uh, bathtubs.
It has to do with families, being able to reside there with, with young kids. So awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, counsel, any other questions, any action we want to take on this? Councilmember Hauser?
I would like to make a motion to approve the amended special project site plan, subject to the four conditions stated in the planners' June 30th, 2025 letter.
Motion by Hauser? Support by, support by Trent. Discussion on the motion from my part, um, this is a, a much improved, uh, project. Um, so thank you for going through our process. To me, this is a demonstration of our process worked. Uh, it's an improved process. Um, we got, uh, improved special project, uh, features and I think it's going to be great for residents to, uh, to live here. City Clerk, the roll call.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Let the construction begin. Thank you. Um, moving on to, um, our second item under public hearings. We have a public hearing. Um, this is for consideration for implementation of our new zoning ordinance text and adoption of our new zoning ordinance map to align with our city's master plan in accordance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. So tonight, um, council, we are going to have a presentation from Vidya and, um, then we are going to have the public hearing. Um, so Vidya, I will yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll start off by sharing the city's zoning map, proposed zoning map on the screen. This is a project that has been a long time in the making. A little bit of background on it, the city's planning commission has worked on this project to bring it to this stage before the city council, at least for the past five years. Your master plan, that is currently the city's master plan, was adopted in 2022 and that 2022 master plan recommended the creation of several new zoning districts. Now, many of these zoning districts mirrored the districts that were recommended by a 2014 master plan. In fact, after the 2014 master plan was adopted, uh, the planning commission had started working on these districts and then, uh, the process sort of stopped. And then when the 2022 master plan was adopted, those districts were picked up again and the planning commission worked on them. And at this point of time, the planning commission has gone through all of the new zoning districts, created the necessary new zoning districts with your regulations. They have had multiple public hearings on the zoning map that you see on the screen and they have had public hearings on the text of the entire zoning ordinance. Once new districts are adopted, the zoning ordinance was redone in order to eliminate any redundancies, uh, remove any conflicting language and make sure that the various other provisions in the ordinance, such as parking or other signage, other areas of the ordinance also correspondingly are updated to reflect the new districts that are adopted. To provide a brief description of all of the new districts, um, it is a project many years in the making, so I'm not going to go too much in-depth, but I do want to give a high-level overview of each one of these districts. Starting with the middle of the city, the core downtown itself, the central business district remains unchanged as it is in today's zoning ordinance. The master plan then recommended something called as downtown interface. The downtown interface was designed to be an area on either sides of the core downtown itself to provide for more opportunities for commercial development and support uses to the downtown while recognizing, uh, what lies further to the west or to the east. Now, the downtown interface, as recommended by the master plan, translated into three new zoning districts. The first one was downtown edge one. Downtown edge one is this pink color that you see, uh, where my cursor is pointing to on the screen. Now, the downtown edge one is on the west side of Main Street Alley and it is also designed as an area that will accommodate commercial uses and office uses but of a lower intensity, recognizing the fact that the area further west of it is all single-family residential and two-family residential. So the downtown edge one also maintains a relatively lower profile. The building heights are similar to what would be required of single-family residential homes. The intent is that no building that is built in the downtown edge area should overwhelm the central business district because all of these are located approximately at the same topographical level. So the downtown edge one is an extension of the downtown without overwhelming the downtown by the building stature or the design guidelines. The second district that was created was on the east side of Main Street, on the east side of this alley, which is called as downtown edge two. Now, the downtown edge two is a more expansive district that not only goes on the east side of Main Street, it also picks up certain parcels that are about paint brick over here east of City Hall. The reason why downtown edge two significantly differs from downtown edge one, it is not in the profile of the uses, it is in the actual design guidelines. Buildings that are going to be permissible in the downtown edge two are buildings of a much taller height. That is because when you go east of Main Street Alley, the east of Main Street, once you go to the alley, the grade of the land just significantly drops off. If you have lower-profile buildings, such as a two or a three-story building, when you head east on any of the streets from downtown, you're going to be seeing the rooftops of those buildings along with the mechanical equipment and other stuff that you don't really want to see. So the downtown edge two is designed so that these buildings are of a taller height, but they nevertheless will not overwhelm the buildings in the core downtown. The most important feature that is built into the downtown edge one and edge two is something called as line of sight diagrams. Any development that is proposed either in the edge one or the edge two district needs to submit a cross-section diagram that goes across the entirety of Main Street. So if a person were to stand, if there is a development in downtown edge two, a person were to stand on the sidewalk along Main Street and if they looked eastwards, they should only be able to see the roofline of the core downtown. No building in the edge two should be of a stature that will overwhelm any of the core downtown. The key is to maintain the integrity of historic downtown as is. Now, the third district that falls under the downtown interface is this relatively smaller district that is just for a few blocks. It is called the transition district. Now, the transition district is on the best side of Walnut Avenue and the reason in which it differs from edge one or edge two is the uses permitted in the transition district are of a more lower intensity, recognizing the fact that immediately to its west on Pine Street, these are all residential homes. So the transition district is truly intended as a transition from the more intensive commercial uses on Main Street and along the Main Street Alley towards the residential uses. So this acts as a true transition district. From these, we move on to the next district, which is the mixed-use district. The first of the mixed-use district is this really bright pink district. Now, the mixed-use district allows for a wide range of flexibility. It allows for, uh, the construction of buildings that have a residential component, that have commercial, that have office uses, uh, and pretty much they are very versatile in their design profile and in their use profile itself. Second mixed-use district is what we categorize as the mixed-use one district. Now, the mixed-use one district occupies a significant area of land and this is mostly along the Clinton River Trail and along other prominent street frontages. Like in the case of the MU district itself, the MU one also allows for a whole host of uses and these include, uh, residential developments, commercial, uh, service-based uses. The intent of both the mixed-use districts is to provide for a balance between pedestrian traffic and also vehicular traffic. These businesses and the uses in these areas will facilitate vehicular and pedestrian traffic, unlike the core downtown edge one and edge two, which are more pedestrian-oriented itself. Moving from MU one and MU two district, the next district is research tech district. The research tech currently exists in our zoning ordinance as something called research park and it occupies only this whole area that is on the south side of Parkdale. It's pretty much the area where you have Pfizer, uh, and other pharmaceutical companies located. Now, the proposal, the master plan recommended the creation of the research tech district, the R-Tech district, on the north side of South Street. Now, the north side of South Street currently is mostly I two, industrial two. The master plan envisioned that with its proximity to the Clinton River itself, rather than industrial uses, this area should be developed to take advantage of the fact that it's right next to the river by developing it for research and technology-based uses that are in more campus-like settings. So there will be a lot more focus on the design of the buildings, maintenance of green area, landscape stabilization, zones along the Clinton River itself and more uses that would be not as intensive as a mixed use. The challenge with the R-Tech in this area, the reason why R-Tech is more suitable than rather making this mixed use is because the entire north side of South Street is located not just in the 100-year flood plain, it is located in the 500-year flood plain too. Now, that is not to say that you cannot do construction in the flood plain. You can construct in the flood plain, but there is a lot of mitigation factors that are involved. There are several reasons why the master plan does not recommend mixed use for the, for this area. One of it being the location of all these properties within the flood plain. The second being that this whole area, if it is zone mixed use, will encourage more residential development. Mixed use innately brings residential and commercial or residential and office. By making this area more attractive for residential development, you would essentially be creating so many more vehicle trips onto South Street, which is a one-lane street in either direction. In the recent years, the planning commission and the city council have approved a lot of different residential projects as special projects. Those are all under construction or in various phases of development. Each one of those projects did submit traffic impact studies showing that the impact is going to increase, but it did not necessitate any major improvements. Once all of these developments are constructed and occupied, we are going to see additional traffic on the roads. That's just the innate nature of development. Changing this area to mixed use would invite additional residential development with more additional residential traffic. And the only way for this traffic to head towards Main Street is once again to use the diversion street, which we already know from our prior experience while reviewing 210 diversion, the preserves and riverfront place apartments, is that diversion and first street laws, is that it is going to be a really intense area. We do not want to add more traffic to this area to create more of, um, tight bottleneck, which already exists sometimes during peak hours itself. The last reason why we believe an R-Tech designation is more suitable is because this R-Tech area is directly opposite to the only remaining industrial corridor within the city of Rochester, the next district, which is the LI or Light Industrial. Our zoning ordinance currently has two industrial districts. They are I one and I two. The new zoning ordinance consolidates all of the industrial thing into one LI, Light Industrial District, and all of the industrial uses are located on the south side of Second Street. Now, the reason for making this choice is the property to the north, to the further south of this area is all located at a much higher elevation. As such, this area is fully contained. It has got numerous industrial uses in it now and changing it to any other designation would make all of them non-conforming en masse, which is not a sound planning design. In addition to that, the city also needs to provide for industrial uses somewhere within the city's limits itself and this area is more suited for it since it currently also exists in industrial configuration. The remaining districts are all residential. Residential districts R one to R five, all of these are various single-family residential districts. They are spread out all over the city and they remain unchanged and untouched in the new zoning ordinance and zoning map. The R two district also remains in its regulations as is. The RM one and the RM two, which is multiple-family one and multiple-family two districts, they're tweaked slightly. Now, RM one, multiple-family district is also going to be referred to as the mixed residential district. It does not change the use profile of the type of residential uses that are permitted, but it does have specific design guidelines for how they must be built. The RM two, on the other hand, has been amended to reduce the maximum permitted building height. The current zoning ordinance has, allows for a significantly increased height. I believe it's 80 feet or more for buildings in the RM two. In the new zoning ordinance, that has been brought down. One of the most important considerations in all of these new zoning districts and the zoning ordinance is the fact that each one of these districts has got specific design guidelines for setbacks, placement of structures, for parking, as a result of which there is no ambiguity in exactly what regulations would be applicable to a particular design and it also takes out the subjective element if a developer or a property owner knows exactly what is required of them for a particular district if they want to develop it over there. The last significant and major change that we did make to the zoning ordinance is the use of a terminology. The current zoning ordinance for every zoning district has got something called principal permitted uses and then we have something called as special exception uses. Now, special exception is a very confusing term because it quite often gets interchangeably used with special projects. Special exception and special projects are not the same. They are two completely different entities. Special projects is a unique tool, which is unique to Rochester and the design of which is something that helps encourage development, that provides public benefit. There are similar tools in other communities, which is called a planned unit development, but we believe the use of special projects in Rochester is a much more elevated, uh, tool to be used compared to a PUD. The way in which the city has used and applied it has resulted in much improved development, especially when the special projects are always done in conjunction with the sustainability analysis that accompanies every new special project. Now, special exception, on the other hand, is normally referred to in all other zoning ordinances as either a special land use or a conditional land use. We use the term conditional land use. We replace special exception with conditional land use because the term itself is partly self-explanatory. It means these are uses that are permitted in the district subject to conditions being added. added to them to mitigate any adverse impacts that might result from the use itself. So, if you look at the entire zoning ordinance, the term special exception has been replaced with conditional land uses. It is the same thing, it is just a more clearer term, and avoids the confusion that currently exists when people look at the city's zoning ordinance itself. So, this entire project, the new zoning map, all of the new zoning districts, and the new zoning districts being fitted into the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance having all of these housekeeping changes to make sure that it's all in sync, this entire project is presented before the City Council tonight for a public hearing and first reading. I tried to keep it as concise as I could to help hit all the main points of this project. I would be happy to answer any specific questions that either council or anybody else has. Thank you.
Thank you. So, before we have the public hearing, council, do you have any other questions, Councilmember Hauser?
Vidya, thank you very much for that discussion. It was very, very helpful. I do want to make sure I heard one thing correctly, though. I believe you said the only light industrial that we will have would be on the south side of South Street, but I believe that was possibly incorrect because there's two parcels, or there's a few parcels, I should say, up above by Woodward there, where I think across from Dilman and Upton.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes, you are correct, Councilmember Hauser. I was referring to the only remaining industrial corridor.
Okay.
Which is a conglomeration of all parcels. In addition to these light industrial, we do have industrial, light industrial in a couple of other portions. These are individual parcels. One is located where Rara, the site of Rara is actually light industrial. It is an existing use that is permitted in the district. It is indoor/outdoor recreation that is allowed in the I1. So, this parcel, Rara's parcel, remains light industrial, and also Mr. C's Car Wash that is up on Woodward. And this small parcel, these are the Fentanyl Order of the Eagles and a couple of buildings that are located behind it. These parcels were left as light industrial in the master plan that the city adopted. I believe, I am not sure of the exact reason, but it is my understanding by following up on some of the discussions that took place at the time that this ordinance, the master plan was being written, is the reason that these property owners wanted to maintain the conformity of their parcels itself. That was one reason. The other reason was these are long-used industrial parcels. It is unclear if there is any contamination or not, especially since these parcels abut the DPW yard, which I believe does have contamination. So, since it abuts these parcels, it is unclear whether these parcels would need any remedial action to be taken. And I believe the last reason to leave this in its present format was to, it wa, it was not clear whether these should be mixed residential again, like the Solaronics parcel that is next to it or not, because this is a pretty intensive use. Mixed residential is an intensive residential use. It was not desired to have more of that mixed residential use here. So, these parcels were left industrial to revisit when you do your next five-year master plan revisit to add time to check if this is something the City Council and the Planning Commission want to consider a different designation for. So, yes, you are correct in your summary. The continuous industrial corridor is on the south side of South Street, and the few isolated remaining industrial parcels are the Rara, Mr. C's Car Wash, the Fentanyl Order of Eagles, and the couple of properties that are right next to it.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones, I'm just going to go down because I'm sure everyone's got questions. Councilmember Jones.
So, I just want to clarify on what you were just saying. So, the lumberyard, what is the designation for that?
The lumberyard Dilman and Upton is designated as RM1 Multiple Family Residential or Mixed Residential. That is the designation.
Okay. And that is changing from what it was before.
That, that is changing from industrial one as recommended in the master plan.
Okay. And just, there's lots and lots of questions, but I'm not going to go through all of them right now. Just in general, we don't necessarily, these changes are not necessarily the match, match with master plan, correct?
So, when you adopt a zoning map, your zoning map must be in sync with the future land use plan map in your master plan. That said, there are a few parcels on this that have been changed based upon Planning Commission's public hearing and receipt. You are allowed to make changes to individual parcels with substantial justification for why the zoning designation of those parcels was changed, not in conformance to your future land use plan map. You cannot unilaterally make change to an entire area without going through the public hearing process of a master plan all over again. When the Planning Commission held its public hearing, after the first public hearing, they had two full days when my colleague, John Jackson, was there at the city of Rochester and held open-house hours where property owners throughout the city, anybody who had any concerns about the zoning on their property changing or had questions could walk in, speak with John, get clarification on it, and in some cases, the property owners whose zoning designation was changing came and presented and made a case for why the zoning that is shown on this map is more appropriate than what is recommended by the future land use plan map. And in those cases, those changes were made with documentation of the reason for deviating from the future land use plan map. The map cannot be changed just because somebody did not like a particular designation on a property. It has to be justified, and those justification is actually documented in the Planning Commission's documentation when they decided to make the changes to a few parcels from the future land use plan map.
Okay. I guess, I guess I would wonder the justification on the lumberyard having changed that way, but, but I won't, I won't belabor that anymore. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trent.
Yes, so, yeah, Vidya, this is Marilyn. Trent, we, you answered my questions earlier today, and thank you, but still have a couple of questions about mixed use. I know that you have done a good job of discussing why it should be R-Tech research on the north side of South Street. My question is, does the whole area have to be R-Tech research? Because then you're going to have these office buildings, and why can't you have some kind of combination of, of mixed use and R-Tech? And, you know, because you're going to have, don't you want, I mean, those people may want to have a little restaurant real close by, or, you know, or, or some little shop or something? Because you don't want to be, you don't want them being all jammed up trying to get up diversion street.
That is a very valid thought process. I mean, it, it is an idea whether that whole thing has to be at R-Tech or can it be partly R-Tech, partly mixed use, but that is one of those areas where you will have to revisit it in your five-year master plan revisit, and that will be coming up in 2027. You can revisit the area at the time and change it, but at this time, without actual reasoning or feedback from the public, a portion of an area cannot be changed based upon a change in the vision of the community. Because by saying can't we have some of it as mixed use and some of it as R-Tech, we are essentially altering the vision for that entire corridor, not just one parcel. We are altering the vision for the corridor, and alteration to the vision of the master plan cannot be done without seeking public input from all of the citizens of Rochester. So, that is definitely a target area that we can visit in 2027 because that seems to be a portion of concern, as are those industrial parcels up on Woodward.
Well, I just want, so the question about, so, I mean, not everyone in the city of Rochester has said everything they're going to say about R-Tech research on the north side. Not everyone in Rochester. There is some people that came to those visioning sessions three years ago, so I still keep giving pushback. I know that the NASTOR plan is coming up again, but I, you know, if, if these are taking a long time, so I, I don't know if there's a way to say, hey, before we get to 2027, that this has been brought to people's attention and to our attention multiple times to where we're changing the ordinance language on the north side, I mean, on the south side with light industrial. So, this is a real issue. It's not just somebody flippantly decided, hey, why don't we turn that into mixed use? You know what I'm saying? It is, and I hear you saying, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely. I apologize if I sounded like I was saying that. That's not what I meant.
Marilyn woke up one day and said.
I completely understand, Councilmember Trent. My, my point was, under the Planning Enabling Act for the master plan, when the zoning designation for these parcels are decided, it has to be done through public input sessions. It is, it is challenging because sometimes some people who have a very clear and definitive vision are the ones who would come to public hearings and make their comments known, but I would welcome those kind of comments because if those comments are given at the time the master plan's future land use plan map is being drafted, that is the time we can actually go ahead and make those changes. In fact, after you raised this concern at the Planning Commission meeting, I did have an opportunity to sit down with John Jackson and speak about it and check whether this is something that can be done at this time. And John was pretty clear that under the Planning Enabling Act's direction for how a master plan should be structured and how the final output of the future land use plan map is decided, you have to follow a set process, even if at this time you feel like, hey, this is not what we wanted to see. When you are changing, this, at this time, needs to reflect the future land use plan map that is on record for the city, and that is the 2022 master plan. So, I would be more than happy to look at this, but I would even, in, in case I'm misstating it, I would even, you know, defer to Attorney Pratt to just clarify the process as is my understanding in the Planning Enabling Act, that we cannot alter that area without public input on a master plan scale because that would be changing the vision for that area itself.
Wow, okay. Well, thank you. I don't think I have anything else. Maybe by the time it gets to the end, I might.
Thank you, Councilmember Trent.
Not anything.
Thank you. Councilmember Hauser, anything else?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
From my part, thank you, Vidya. Thank you for that overview and explanation. I think it's very important that we are approaching this from a very fair perspective, and so thank you for clarifying that. I've asked my questions through the Planning Commission, so Mayor Protem.
I'm good. I also have a que, you know, wonder why the Dilman and Upton thing is being changed. So, sometime I'd like to hear an explanation for that.
Second there.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
I did want to just clarify something Vidya said earlier. She stated that the Ra-Ra Building was zoned light industrial. In the proposed zoning districts, it is actually zoned MU1. It's actually the property across the street on the south side, so, or the north side, I'm sorry.
North side.
South Street.
Yeah.
Apologize.
So, I just wanted to clarify in case there was confusion there. But I did have a couple of questions. I had watched the last Planning Commission meeting, and I thought at the end of it, I had caught that there was a change, kind of seemed last minute, to the building heights on, in the CBD district. Am I correct about that? That they were raised to thirty, beyond like the two and a half stories to a higher height?
So, it's where we had the discussion, it's where we had the discussion. We had the discussion, Vidya, about the, the importance of the line-of-sight test and, and.
Correct. I think the reason for, let me just scroll to the Central Business District. So, I am, Councilmember King, thank you for correcting me on the Rara. I sometimes get the street side, it was so tiny, I went on the north side, south side. I got a little mixed up there. So, let me scroll to the Central Business District, and I'm going to go to, zooming into the regulations. Yes, it is the spinal clause that you're referring to, buildings in the Central Business District.
Can you make that a little bigger?
May include a third story, subject to conditional use approval.
We can't, we can't see that. Can you make it a little bigger?
Oh, sorry. Let me just make it bigger.
We can hear you, but we, if, then we could see it, too. Thank you.
Okay. So, it refers to the spinal clause in the Central Business District, which basically says buildings in the Central Business District may include a third story, subject to conditional use approval, and further provided that the third story shall not exceed 40 feet, shall be enclosed in a mansard roof, or set back 15 feet from the front building line. The reason this provision was included in the zoning ordinance, it is my understanding from speaking to John, is to provide for continuity in the roof line of the historic downtown itself and make sure that when buildings are built in the DE1 and DE2, that they still continue to remain lower in profile than the core downtown itself. It's specifically mentioned as a conditional use approval itself so that it will give the Planning Commission the ability to decide whether, if a building is, a story is added to a building and the architectural style of the building necessitates a slightly increased height, that the increased height will still be in sync and in harmony with the buildings that are immediately next to it and will maintain the continuity of the roof line. That is the reason for providing this as an option. If, this was to cover the fact that if the downtown is developed, some of them are one-story buildings, if they are raised in height, and if architectural features are put in, we don't reach a situation where a proposed architecture cannot be approved, even if it checks off all other boxes for the Planning Commission, simply because of the height. And this is not something that you can send somebody to the zoning board of appeals for obedience because building height would not fall under the category of somebody demonstrating practical difficulty, which is essential for the ZVA. This was to provide the Planning Commission additional flexibility in reviewing buildings that are developed in downtown itself to ensure that if a building comes with such a unique architecture and this increased height is essential in order to provide the continuing roof line, that it will be allowed. This question was asked by the Planning Commission, and they were okay with leaving this portion of the ordinance in there.
So, I know we've been working on this for a while. I don't recall that being in there before, and I didn't know if this was brought in because of any particular project. I'm just curious if, because I do recall a project on Main Street that was going to exceed the heights, and I just, I wasn't necessarily against it. I'm just curious if that's driving it.
I don't recall that it was in response to a specific project. I don't think we have had any project that came asking for such a specification. I believe this was when drawing up the design guidelines for the Central Business District, this was included. That said, one of the first things the Planning Commission has indicated they want to do once we are through with this process is to revisit the Central Business District in its entirety and section 2118, which specifically, that is actually in the supplemental regulations of the zoning ordinance, but it sets forth the architectural guidelines for all buildings in the Central Business District. The Planning Commission's first project after this is to revisit the Central Business District in its entirety, every single use that is in there, and the architectural guidelines to make sure that it is exactly what the city wants to protect the integrity of the downtown as it currently stands.
Shouldn't that be part of this process?
Yeah.
Like, I don't want to approve something and then we're not okay with it. Sounds like planning hasn't done the work on that. That concerns me a little bit. I also do think this came in due to a specific project. There was a proposal for the old dry cleaner and auto body shop on Main Street that did exceed the building heights. I think at the time, planning, I don't think it got to council, but planning was very strong on holding those heights, so I'm a little surprised to see this raised. I'd be interested to hear public comment on it, but those are just my comments. And then, I did want you, Vidya, if you could specifically address, we had received a letter about a property that's being proposed to be rezoned MU1. It's currently an I2. It's very hard to read, like, side by side, and I've been trying to identify, they're concerned about, this property owner is concerned about the change and the constraints it's going to put on. I think it'd be really helpful to understand the, the primary differences between those that might impact a property owner in that area.
I could be happy to look into that, Councilmember King, and bring back information before your next, I'm, I'm not familiar with what the address of the property is or some, or what the specific concerns are, but I would be more than happy to look into it. I'm not sure if the property owner had an opportunity to speak with John during his open house, but I can definitely look into it and bring information back. This is your first reading and public hearing.
Okay.
There will be a second reading, at which time the Planning Commission will still have the option based upon that, I'm sorry, the City Council will still have the option to make any changes that it chooses to.
Okay. It is 340 Mill Street, and I do believe they talked to John. I think it just would be helpful to have more context here and understand the difference. and understand the differences between those.
I definitely will get information from John and also any feedback from any conversations he had. That will help the council understand that better. I do want to go back to the previous question as to why we are just tweaking some of the CBD and not the entire district. The Central Business District is one of the most important districts in the city. If we undertake the Central Business District, this entire process that the Planning Commission has been working so hard to do it, this will get completely derailed. There is no doubt about it. The Central Business District is one of the main districts. And as such, it's not going to be a district that is going to be easy to review or just make a few tweaks to. And yet, that is why the Planning Commission, Mayor Salvia and Councilmember Hauser can also confirm that. The Planning Commission decided that let us complete this process, and we will revisit it because we would like to discuss every single aspect of the Central Business District. So discussing that, some of these new districts that were adopted that you have in your ordinance, such as Downtown H1, Downtown H2, each of these districts, when we started writing them originally, took five to six months at the Planning Commission to write. Then they, these districts were laid to rest. And then once we started the new implementation phase, we once again started rewriting them. So each of these districts has been months and months of work. So if you undertake the Central Business District alone now, all of the rest of the districts, everything gets held back for that one district. So that is the reason the Planning Commission decided, let us proceed with this process because your master plan implementation has been pending since 2014, essentially. So it's time it got adopted. And then we are going to fix the Central Business District, which will take a lot of work on the part of the Planning Commission. And then it will come to the City Council. And the City Council will have a lot of say in the matter too and decide whether they like the recommendations that are being made. At this time, it is not going to be an easy district to just review. It's not something that, if you put this process on hold, can be taken care of in one or two months.
So I understand that. But if we're going to make a change in the Central Business District that is as impactful as changing the building heights, and we're not touching the whole of it, that makes me a little bit uncomfortable having, you know, if we're not looking at the whole thing, but we're going to change this. I understand we want to get through this process to add in the new districts. But I think we shouldn't make the changes to CBD if we're not going to do the whole thing. So that's just my point there. I did have one other question that I wanted to ask about. It's about on South Street. It appears there are, there's a couple of like split parcels. They're on both sides of the river, the really weird shaped parcels. They span both sides of the river, and they're industrial. It looks like basically our bike path goes through it on the one side of the river, and then the other, it's really just trees. I'm just curious, is that developable property in any way? It's to the left of that green space down, yes? No, that, the industrial, sorry, research tack, is that what it's called? RTAC.
Yes, this is research tack. Okay.
So it would be like those.
Are you talking about these two?
No, in the research tack.
Okay.
Yep. So it's like the skinny properties that the river literally goes through those. I'm just curious if there's.
I think that's Mill Street.
It's actually in Elizabeth there. It's just property ownership, but you couldn't develop it.
What? At the end of Elizabeth?
That's where she's talking.
No.
I'm sorry, which parcel are we looking at, Councilmember King?
She's showing the map, she's showing the map to Nick. She's showing the map to Nick. Let's see if we can get you acclimated to it.
It would be directly south of the Suave property. And so it's this like really weird shape. It follows the river. Nope.
It's in the RTAC.
Yep, RTAC.
Okay. Okay.
Nope, to the left.
Boy.
Our left.
Pfizer. Go back, go back to RTAC, I believe. Isn't that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all this is RTAC. You want me to go to the RTAC on South Street?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
On RTAC on South Street. It's the property that directly abuts the Suave property, but it's off of South Street. So it, it actually, the river goes right through this property. It is a really weird shape.
That's Mill Street, isn't it?
The river goes through their property, so.
This is Mill Street. Nick might be able to answer this with the individual properties because I'm getting a little thrown off at, without seeing the exact parcel you're pointing to. Nick might be able to answer which specific parcel are you concerned about? This is Mill Street over here.
No, so I think, maybe if I could make a suggestion here so we can communicate properly on this. Can we take this offline? You know, I think from my part, the goal is to have the public hearing and council's initial questions out here. I don't anticipate us taking any action on this tonight. There's a lot to digest. It's August in Michigan, and I think it would be inappropriate to the public to not give a little more time for this to, you know, be considered and discussed. So Councilmember King, if you could get maybe a picture of it, the specific parcel?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Not right now.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just with the Central Business District, I didn't see that, the raised height either. And it seems to me like this council didn't ask for a higher height. It seems like it should be the City Council driving this, not the Planning Commission. And it's like Vidya said, well, the Planning Commission is going to do this and will have a say in it. To me, it should be the opposite. We should be driving this. And, you know, we asked the Planning Commission to look at something. The Planning Commission, I don't think, is to be setting policy and making these kind of decisions. So I think that's just something that we need to, you know, consider because who's driving the process here? I think it should be up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to Councilmember Jones.
A quick question, and maybe there was lots to read in here. So under Section 804, Development Standards, and this is for multifamily, actually, it's mixed residential. There's, under Section 804.2, it talks about front porches. So it looks like something has changed there. Is that true? Do you know where I'm referring?
I can look into it, Councilmember Jones. And what I'm going to do is all of the questions that were posed by council members, I will try to put it all together and get answers to all of your questions. I will also discuss it with John and provide some clarification on some of the questions that have been raised today. Like the mayor said, this is tonight just for public hearing. I want to get all your comments. I want to provide you with the correct answers. So I am taking down notes, and I will look into that language, Section 804.2, and I will bring back information to you on that.
And honestly, there's a couple of other questions I have, but I'm just going to email you directly. And then I'll give you a chance to look for the answers. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I would like to agree with Councilmember King about the height opportunity for new development or, yeah, or renovation development, I guess, or infill development on the CBD district. So I would like to put that in as well, not to, yeah, just to say I'm in a full agreement on taking a look at that and possibly taking it out.
Okay.
Absolutely. If the council is not amenable to that particular language and would like to wait till the CBD is reviewed in its entirety, the council can remove the language.
Okay. So I know we have several written correspondence. So City Clerk, should we go to written correspondence first? Or should I just open the public hearing?
Let's do written correspondence real quick, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
Placed before you this evening, you did receive two letters, or actually, three letters. First is regarding 340 Mill Street, and it was sent in by Trident Milltown, and they are objecting to the rezoning of 340 Mill Street. Their second property is at 322 and 326 Albertson. And that had three letters, all about the same property. One from Mr. Jeff Russell, and then also from Lake Shore Environmental, and also from Williams, Williams, Retner, and Plunkett regarding the rezoning of that property, and they're objecting to that. And I do believe that the Russells are on Zoom and would like to participate in the public hearing. And that's all for you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So at this point, 8:39, I'm going to open up the public hearing. So let's take our in-person, anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment regarding this topic. Good evening, Margaret.
Margaret Mountain, I'm at 160 Albertson. Really, it's kind of a process question. I understood, I thought tonight, and I was obviously confused, I thought tonight you guys were going to be deciding, like voting on the master plan. And obviously, it's a public hearing, there's more process. So one thing I'd like to understand is what the process is. Because there were some questions, like I've always kind of been curious about how Dillman and Upton changed. And not necessarily for or against, but it's a significant change to go from a lumberyard to multi-unit. And so the questions that I heard, so we'll send it to Vidya and she'll respond. I'm wondering when we, who aren't on council, would have the opportunity to hear the answers to the questions that you guys have posed, because I have some of those. I'm curious and interested in the answers as well. So I'm interested to understand what the process is to get us across the line. And then when we would hear the answers to the questions the council has proposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, public comment, so we're not answering that, right? Or do we answer that?
Sure, we can.
Okay.
So Vidya will digest this, we'll bring that back. She will verbalize that at the next meeting. List the questions, she's nodding her head. And then everybody will get the answer together. So we will definitely, you'll hear the answers when, at the next time we have this online. And then, yeah, that's the process, so.
But there will be two more council meetings at minimum discussing this.
If you don't adopt.
If we take no action tonight and just do public hearing, it'd be two more city council meetings.
Correct.
Yes. I will provide a written answer. I will consolidate all the questions that the council members may email me. I've taken down notes today. I will make sure, once I talk to John, we will put this together in the form of a memo and give written responses to each. So that is something that the residents can also read, even if they're not at the meeting, the city can distribute it. However, it can be included as part of a packet or anything. So the residents will also know the answers to all of those questions. I'll make sure it is all in writing, so it's easy to read and refer to.
Thank you. So we'll put it in the next council packet when this is back on our agenda again.
Pat. Pat.
A height, that's a real concern. I know you're trying to keep the sightline appropriate so that it is inviting, looks good, has the ambiance of the city, the town. We're always talking the business area, the downtown. Our residential areas are really suffering with what's allowed to be built. And it considers height and mass. And in looking at a lot of zoning, I saw a lot of things that would be maybe questionable on the infills and everything. I'm going to take another long look at it, and then I can always send a message. But I think height and mass residential is a concern. And we're very concerned about a sightline, but not in residential. 78% of the taxes still comes off residential properties. And in the older section, when they have the small lots, where I see where lots says X thousand square feet, a lot of us don't even have that. My lot size is under 6,000 square feet. And I live in an appropriately sized house with a one-car garage, 823 square feet. And I'm just saying. And we look at, we don't even look at rooftops. All we see are sides of buildings, houses. That's all we see.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Tom Turnbull, and was 5A Real Estate Group, 3400 East Lafayette, Detroit. I came here tonight because originally, I don't believe the letter that Councilmember King referenced was in your package. I think it was added late.
This evening, yes.
But you have, okay. I brought copies if you don't have them, but everybody has now.
Yes.
The reason it came, because it wasn't, it wasn't in the package when we looked it up online that you had it. And we're here tonight because we're in opposition to our property being rezoned to mixed use. You know, this is a property that we've had for quite some time. We have maintained it pretty impeccably for the last 20-plus years. We participate with the city when the city wants to use our land. If people aren't familiar with it, this is the land that Mill Street cuts through. Mill Street is our road, it was our driveway. But we've worked with the city. You've wanted to use it as a bypass for the last 20 years, and we're fine with that. This is a very difficult property to develop because of the size. There's others that have developed other projects in Rochester over the last 20 years that we've owned this. They're much smaller. When you talk about the Lucherco property, that's 21 units. Ours is much larger. And by making this mixed use, it's going to make it more economically difficult to develop than it is with the current zoning. So, you know, I understand you're not going to, you've done a lot of hard work, and I, we appreciate that. You know, we were very, we're committed to Rochester. We've owned two pieces, probably the two largest pieces in all of Rochester.
You do.
Owned it for 20 years. We're not going anywhere. We will develop them when it's right. But this, we feel, is going to be a negative impact on us. It's going to make it more difficult to do it mixed use than the current zoning. So we just appreciate that consideration coming forth. And I do appreciate everything Vidya's done.
Public comment.
And the City Council has done. But we're here.
Great, thank you. We look forward to hearing some of those site plans.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Hello, I'm Michael Cohen, 337 Creek Street. We are the property, just adjacent to the property, which I believe the letters were addressing. And I'm assuming the Russells will be speaking shortly. I just want to say, and I know a lot of you were already part of the process on the Planning Commission, we went through that public process. We're very appreciative of the process itself. We believe that we were listened to. We believe, the community believes that the compromise that was coming up with leaving the option of properties residential, designated as a special district, is the best balance between the current property owners, surrounding community, and the Rochester community as a whole. Gives everybody a chance to participate in dealing with what everyone agrees is a very challenging special property. So I just want to say, thanks for bringing that compromise together and encouraging everybody to continue with that as you move forward in the approval process.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else here this evening? Then I will move to the online public comment. So Brian, do we have any public comment from online?
Yes, hi. I see a caller with their hand raised, ending 072.
And Vidya, you are sharing your screen. I don't know if you want to continue that.
Yes, I'm happy to discontinue sharing if the council would prefer not to have it. I just left it on there. I'll remove it. Okay.
Thank you. 072, you have your hand raised. If you could please unmute and have your public comment.
Hi, good evening. This is actually Jeff Russell. I had intended to zoom into the meeting, but I have a very unstable internet connection. So I thought this was probably a more appropriate manner to do, to address the council. First, I'd like to thank City Council for the opportunity to discuss our properties in the zoning this evening. And instead of making a presentation, in the interest of efficient use of the council's time, I'll summarize our comments and previously emailed documents. And with that, I need to pick on a, that's it. So at the June Planning Commission meeting, we were disappointed that the city's administration recommended 322 and 326 Albertson parcels continue to be rezoned R1, not light industrial. We respectfully request City Council to change the subject parcel, zoning to light industrial with special project designation in agreement with the approved 2022 master plan future use map. plan future use map. Supporting facts for light industrial are: One, 2022 master plan and its future use map called for the property to be zoned LI, light industrial, with special project designation. That decision by planning commission resulted from review of the existing environmental conditions of the property and the inability to achieve residential remediation standards. The property cannot be redeveloped as residential R1. From the letter from Lake Shore stating in their conclusion, that the letter was dated December 14th, which we included in an email in tonight's course plan, we have concluded that it's virtually impossible to remediate this property to be suitable for unrestricted residential use. Thirdly, at the May 5th Planning Commission meeting, we asked for our April 24th letter, which proposed conditional light industrial rezoning with a statement of conditions to be considered, and the letter included in the June 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission packet. It was not. Letter was provided to the planning commissioners, but was not provided to the planning commissioners until after the June 2nd meeting, where they took action to change the proposed zoning map from light industrial to residential R1 for our parcel. We believe the conditional rezoning approach as part of the city's zoning amendment process could have met all parties' concerns, including our neighbors, the administration, our tenants, and the current owner. Also, it would have eliminated the need to revisit the zoning and use of this property again within the next three to 12 months by the planning commission and city council. I've lost track of time. Fifth, we disagree with the statement from the May 19th city planners' recommendation that the unique challenges specifically a non-conforming industrial building, non-conforming uses, irregular shade sites, environmental constraints, lend themselves to R1 residential zoning. On the contrary, these facts all lead to support light industrial zoning with special project designation. It astounds us that the city would enact zoning for a parcel that is impossible for the site to conform with, thereby creating and perpetuating a non-conformity. In the 1980s, city's decision makers did not have the information we now possess, and they changed the zoning from industrial 1 to R1. Say, we have more data and knowledge of the exact scope of the environmental problem makes it impossible to achieve R1 residential remediation. And still, those who zone the property, the use it can never attain. In conclusion, Albertson LLC is thankful for the recommendation of the special project designation for these parcels. We agree, special project designation is a critical tool for the future development of such a challenging site that also includes input from our neighborhood. Finally, we would like to thank the city administration, planning commission, and city council for your time and effort reviewing the zoning parcel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments online?
I'm not seeing any other callers at this time.
Great, thank you, Brian. Any other public comments in the audience this evening?
Hello, city council. My name is Lauren Coleman. I reside at 337 Gregg Street. I'm sad that I have to be up here yet again to speak about this subject. I am unduly concerned, and I think this is a great example of the concern that I have around these properties, that as a neighborhood, we are going to have to continue to come to every planning commission meeting and every council meeting, because it seems like we just cannot get this issue resolved. The properties that he's speaking of sit in the middle of a residential district. They are adjacent to a daycare center, the Payne Creek Trail. And literally across the Payne Creek Trail is the Rochester Municipal Park. None of the neighborhood wants this to be zoned light industrial. Light industrial is not appropriate for those parcels. If you read the very definitions that you will be defining in these zoning ordinance updates, there is nothing in the zoning ordinance updates that is appropriate to be sitting in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I would urge you to consider again that this matter has been heard before by the planning commission, and we will continue to come as a neighborhood to make sure that you all understand how important it is to preserve the tax base, to preserve the character of the neighborhood, to preserve the safety of that area, and the beauty of that area as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Paula Feiler, 133 Gregg Street. I have to agree with my neighbors that this is a very difficult piece. And I think most of the neighbors realize that a residential home is not going to be built on this site. I don't think any homeowner would want to be there. However, rezoning it to light industrial is going to pave the way for much more intense use. There are provisions. Just because it's zoned residential doesn't mean that it has to be built residential. Coming to the planning commission, a builder could come in and propose to maybe someone who wants to potentially buy it based on zoning. They could come in and recommend something to the planning commission that would be in keeping with the area, but not as intense as light industrial. So I think that is our concern, and I would support not rezoning it to light industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I think we got one more. Maybe two, who knows?
Margaret Mountain, 160 Albertson. I'm just, I'm just giving you the benefit of a little history lesson. I didn't bring my notes with me, but there was discussion about, you know, it was decided to be light industrial, and then the planning commission changed it to be residential special projects. But when I went back to the meeting where it became light industrial, two things. It was so old, you couldn't see the notes to, or you couldn't see the video to understand what the business case was to do that. And I would tell you, we had a roomful of people here from our area. And the only people that came, it was, I would say, it slipped in at the last minute. It was a very, very short public hearing, like maybe 12 minutes, like very, very short. There were no dissenters to going to light industrial. And I would say that simply because the people in the neighborhood didn't know. Like, they thought it was already kind of done. You know, a number of people were involved. And then I'd say at the 11th hour, like, we were shocked. In fact, almost missed the fact that it became, it was changed to light industrial and approved on that map. So I just want to be sure you guys have the benefit of that history, that there wasn't a lot of discussion, it wasn't really well-vetted in public hearings, and yes, we should make it light industrial. And then all of a sudden, the neighbors wanted to get involved. That's not actually how it happened. It was very, like, I'd say it was about 12 minutes with no dissenters. And if you'd been at the public, some of you would have been at the public or at the planning commission meeting. This room was packed out with neighbors who were very concerned. So there's no way there would have been no dissenters at that meeting if there had been an awareness that that was going to be brought forward. So I just want to be sure that you've kind of got that history when we have further discussion.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. It is 8:58, and I'm going to close the public hearing. So really trying to keep this process as transparent as possible. So tonight's agenda item is to have the public hearing. Council could move this forward for first reading. My hope would be that we don't move it forward, that we give time for Vidia to reply to some of these comments, give that transparency to the public, give them awareness if they want to come back to this next council meeting. And then I'll say, in the most efficient timeline, it still would be two council meetings before any final action is taken on this. Counsel, does that sound appropriate? Had not, okay. Counselmember Jones?
My question would be, I'm going to miss the next meeting, so I'm curious, when would we revisit this next? How does that all roll out?
After Vidia has time to create a report. So I don't think she'd have it done in two weeks, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
September.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so no other actions on that. Moving on to Section 8, which is our legislative deliberation. This is consideration of an ordinance amendment to the BLIGHT ordinance, Section 20-131. The action here that council could be taking is to move this for first reading and introduction. I know we've had a committee working on this, and public input on this. City Attorney, would you like to start with this one?
Sure, thank you. Just briefly, because this body is well aware of the BLIGHT ordinance. In fact, it's not often that an ordinance gets its own subcommittee. So there was a lot of work put on by the subcommittee, some that I was part of, some that I wasn't, and then a good discussion took place. It is the, and I don't want to speak, but I think I'm speaking in turn, is that the version that's in the packet today is the consensus of the BLIGHT committee is ready to be moving forward. There were changes. They took the committee and myself and Mr. and Assistant Manager Bando, took the comments of city council as a whole into consideration. Some of the, I'll say objections or concerns with some of the language was addressed, and I'll just point one out, which is, there was, if you recall, there was discussion in the previous draft that I had to remove the appeal process to city council. Your concerns were heard around this dais, and that was put back in. That's an example of what, the kind of things that the BLIGHT committee took a look at. Some of the comments from city council members before were that it seemed, in some areas, were a little too heavy-handed, thank you, heavy-handed. So we did loosen some of the language up, because it wasn't meant to do that. But this version before you, I think, is in good order based on the feedback provided from city council and as processed by administration and the BLIGHT committee. If city council wishes to move forward with it, the action would be to move this for first reading and introduction.
Thank you, City Attorney. I'll look to council here, specifically the committee. Does anyone from the committee want to have some comments on this?
Go ahead, Deb.
I just, I'm just kind of going to reiterate what the attorney just said. There's been a lot of time and input from the public, as well as council members. For this, I feel very confident in what's been done, and I thank Councilmember Hauser for kind of taking charge and doing a lot of work on this. And so I'm in support of moving forward with this.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Motion to move for first reading and adoption by Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. I'm going to take discussion on the motion.
Sure. No, I want to thank the time and effort that my colleagues put into this. And this was something that we really looked at carefully, I think, for maybe 10 or 11 months. And this wasn't a knee-jerk reaction. This wasn't anything, that wasn't done without a lot of consideration input from our colleagues, but most importantly, the public. And I think the intent was to really tighten up a lot of loose ends and maybe some loopholes that had been in place, in an effort to not only enhance the ordinance, but to be a little bit more responsive when it comes time for enforcement. So this is one tool of many tools that we're hoping to implement here moving forward. So thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to City Attorney, Mr. Manager, as well, and my colleagues. So I don't have any further comments on this issue.
You have the floor.
Yeah, well, thank you. As I was a part of the BLIGHT committee, and really, you know, really enjoyed the robust conversations, and that points that I made were taken in consideration. And we did have to be careful in making sure it was legally sound, enforceable, and not misused, because one of my concerns was that it didn't become like one neighbor's or one business's aesthetics are different from another, and you separate that than what is real BLIGHT, that you can, you know, that can be enforced. And they are important, as they help maintain BLIGHT ordinances, help maintain safety, health, and the overall appearance of our neighborhoods and downtown. However, they must be crafted and enforced in a way that is fair and balanced and free from weaponization. And so that is what my fear was, and I think it's been put to rest, because I feel like that our neighbors are, I mean, this town is a friendly town in general, that's what I've seen. And this is why I would like to maintain the shared gold of our community standards while fostering understanding and continued cooperation. A fair and legally sound and consistently applied ordinance will protect the character of Rochester without eroding the neighborly spirit that makes our city such a special place to live. And I personally would like to see that we revisit the ordinance at regular intervals and make sure that it isn't, you know, somebody trying to get even with another neighbor. And that, you know, we want to make sure that our, that our people who enforce it, who we're not real sure at this point, but we know there are some that are enforcing that, are not overworked and for frivolous complaints. So far, I have seen that it's not been used in that way, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. So from my standpoint, I don't anticipate the BLIGHT committee being decommissioned if this were to pass tonight. I think, you know, an ordinance change is part of our process. I've been really focused on our process. We've talked about the See Click Fix as a tool that provides transparency. We have some additional resources around that, but yet we still have some additional work to do on that, you know, in terms of improving that process, using pictures. And just really, there's so much we can do. And I am sensitive to neighbor Pat Kane's comments on, I don't like really saying that we have a BLIGHT problem, because I don't think we have a BLIGHT problem in Rochester. We have a wonderful community and so many people that care so much about their properties. But I think there's some things that we can do. This ordinance change is one of them, to tighten up that process, so that it can improve all of our property values. But we have to have it with a very balanced hand, where we're being fair to everyone and treating them like a good neighbor, like we would want to be treated. City Council, any other discussion? Councilmember King?
Yeah, I appreciate the committee taking a thorough look at this. I view this not only as just a tool to help our officers, you know, do enforcement, but also for public safety. Specifically, Section 20-132, Number 10, it talks about trimming vegetation around alleys and right-ofways. That's a really important item. We had a girl in our neighborhood on a scooter, and, you know, she was going down the sidewalk, and a car came out of the alley and hit her. And thankfully, she was okay. It was actually blocked by a fence, but there was other vegetation there, too. And I know, I reached out to the city manager and the fire, or the police chief, and they went out and immediately inspected all of the neighboring alleys. And there were quite a few where the shrubbery was overgrown. And I think it's just very important, you know, for people to be maintaining that, and us to have the right tools in place to maintain that and enforce it, you know, because it is really a safety thing. We have a lot of kids in the community, we have older people, we have people walking dogs. We want to make sure that it's safe for all of them. So I really appreciate that. I did have just one comment. I actually wanted to see if we could make one little addition to Item Number 12, when it talks about parking lots and the surfaces. If we could add something about peeling paint or striping. I've noticed there are some parking lots that had, you know, had maybe at one point, the curbs had been painted, and it's falling off, and it just looks terrible. So I would love to see just that specific thing added.
So from an administrative standpoint, is that something that we...
If that's not in here somewhere else, yes, absolutely should be in there.
I...
I think it is.
I think it's in the parking lot.
I think it is, too. Peeling paint on like buildings, but this is specific to parking lots.
I think it's in another area.
But if it's not, then I would be...
Well, striping would be one thing, but this would be like, if you paint your curbs, you got to keep it looking...
That's fair.
Good.
I can handle it.
So with that change?
Yes. And then I do appreciate the opportunity. I think we give residents a way to make an appeal. And if they feel like they're being treated unfairly, or they have issues with it, they have a mechanism to do that. So I'm glad that we added that piece in. We may need to revisit it, depending on how many appeals come to city council, and we might need to come up with, you know, a good mechanism to handle it. But we'll tackle that as it comes.
It's fair.
To be clear, that part was in there, and we took it out, and then we got pushed back, so we put it back in. And I think, Jeff, there was one person in 15 to 18 years who actually did that appeal. Is that right?
I've been 18 years, and there was one person that took advantage of that.
Right.
So that was left in.
But let's keep it in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I support it with that one change.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor Proton?
Yes. First, I want to thank the committee. It's a lot of work. It's not, it's a lot of detail and stuff, so I appreciate that. You know, I have really mixed emotions on this, as... You know, I have really mixed emotions on this, as people have heard me say before. You know, we talk about, everybody here says, well, we don't have a blight problem. Well, why are we redoing the blight issue, then? Why are we redoing an ordinance when we say we don't have the problem? Are there some blight issues in town? Of course. Right? And we need to do a better job of doing that. Councilmember Trent talked about worrying about weaponizing this. I mean, to me, this kind of weaponizes some of this stuff. I mean, you have things in here, we're going to start regulating loose materials, peeling paint, excessive cracks. You know, it's very difficult to get contractors these days, so will my gutters hang in a little bit? Or is my neighbor now going to turn me in for one of these little things? I mean, that's, you know, those are the kind of things I worry about. But I guess I'm willing to give this a chance if we take a look at it, let's say, once a quarter, we have this on the agenda, and we get a report from the city manager, or I'd ask, you know, is this working? Is this out of control? Is this in control? So, you know, I guess this is, the way I look at it is, is a start, as the mayor said, it's a start of the process, not the end of the process. And, you know, let's see if this is working. I mean, again, we say we don't have a blight problem. Well, why are we redoing the blight issue, then? I mean, to me, that's a pretty good question. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I have no objection to periodic updates as to the status of what's going on, and I think even in our managers' reports we get those. So to the extent, and I remember the chief saying in one of the last ones, is blight continues to be a problem. So I think that it's a problem to the extent that there's issues that still remain unresolved, maybe because we don't have the necessary language in our ordinance to enforce those specific situations. So I think this tightens it up a little bit, but to the extent that city administration can give us an update quarterly, every six, however it is, any type of periodic frame that we can come up with, I'm all for.
Yeah, my suggestion would be, we have the Blight Committee when you meet, like any of our other committees, when you, you can give your report out on what's happening.
We'll meet once a quarter.
Yeah.
Great. All right. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it'll go, next meeting, we'll have the second reading, and if it passes, then it'll be enacted in the ordinance.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Seven days after.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item B, another consideration for an ordinance amendment. This one is to allow limited retail in Section 1703 and 1803, and this would be to schedule the public hearing. So this is the accessory use for retail in South Street. So the action tonight, City Attorney?
Yes, the action tonight, since it is a zoning ordinance, is, there's a required public hearing. Even though there was a public hearing and other meetings at Planning Commission, City Council is also required to have a public hearing. So the, at the conclusion of the matter, it would be to schedule it for a public hearing, and at which time, just from a process procedure, it would be, at that time, City Council would consider it for first reading and introduction, and then at yet another meeting, it would be second reading and adoption. So tonight would be the first time City Council has looked at it, then it would be set for a public hearing, then for second reading and adoption after that. So two more meetings after this.
Okay, so if we could perhaps briefly go through this at a high level, and then hopefully we can set the public hearing.
Absolutely. So the, the purpose of this ordinance amendment is, it was, a concern was raised, and a request was made to have some limited retail in the industrial districts. So currently, in the industrial, one industrial, two districts, retail is not permitted as a permitted or accessory use. And so there was, City Council had considered this and gave direction to Planning Commission to, to figure out how to allow some type of limited retail. So what was before City Council is a consideration to have retail space limited to 25% of the gross square footage of the building, if it's a single tenant building, or not, and not more than 25% of a particular tenant space. The idea is to, is to not have the retail be the principal use or the very reason that the building exists, and the building exists down there, but to allow it to, say, have some ancillary, ancillary use down on industrial. So the 25% is a number that was used and discussed as a, as a number that would be significant enough, but yet not overwhelming of the use itself, because, again, the idea is that it's, that's not the only reason or the main reason for the business at the site. There's many iterations of this that, that went through and were discussed. One of the, one of the issues is, because now that, if this is a traction of the public for the retail portion of it, that, that there really needs to be a stepped-up review of the parking associated with that. It's, it's one thing to have employees that show up, work, and leave versus customers that would come for a period of half an hour, an hour, and leave. It'd be more traffic flow in and out, consideration of handicap accessibility and so forth. So we added as part of this that the, that the parking areas must be brought into compliance with off-street parking requirements, including, to Councilmember King's point, the striping and the otherwise designation. Make sure that the parking spots are well-defined and stand out for people to use appropriately. Now, one question that was raised at Planning Commission is, well, these, these are to Section 1703 and 1803, which is special exception uses for industrial. Well, aren't we trying, aren't we changing the name of industrial to research tech and the other industrial one? Yes, that's, that's accurate. So, but as it stands now, City Council is considering an ordinance amendment to what is existing now. So if and when the, the changes happen with the new district names, then those will carry through, and so that's, that's not an issue. That will be picked up when City Council does that. And there is, I thought there was one other thing I wanted to, to, oh, to touch on, yes. The, this was proposed to be in the industrial zones on South Street, industrial zone on South Street. There's a question of, well, shouldn't it be all industrial zones? Well, as we heard tonight, the only other industrial area would be on Woodward. So Planning Commission was satisfied with just keeping it down at South, the industrial of South Street, so that's why it reads that way now. And finally, there's, you heard the planner talk about the different types of uses in the zone. You have permitted use, you have accessory uses, which, you know, think parking lot or something that's associated with the permitted use, and these are called special exception uses, which are proposed to be changed to conditional uses. So we're going to talk about them as in special exception uses now. What that means is it's not ordinarily a use that's, that's found or is part of that district, but the, the applicant would need to come to Planning Commission and make a case that it is appropriate for that particular business, that particular property. So it's not a, what they call permitted use, so it's not as of right. It would require to have a retail component to that business. They just would have to go to Planning Commission to say, hey, this is an appropriate use for this particular building. And you'll see, there's, I didn't list them all, but there's six other for the I-1. This would be the seventh type of special exception use in that. So there's not, this isn't the only one that that's applicable to. There's other uses that would have to go to, for instance, oil and gas wells. If you recall, that's the area for that. Somebody wouldn't have the ability to use that as a right. They would have to come to, to Planning Commission. So this is one of those that administration can't just sign off on it to allow it. It would just have to go to Planning Commission. That's the approving body. So that's why it's under the special exception uses section. So with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions as to process or language, and, but if City Council is ready to move forward with it in some fashion, then the, it would be to set the matter for a public hearing.
Thank you. Council?
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
This is a question for administration. Pardon me. What does it cost for an applicant to come before Planning Commission for, to seek special exception use? Do you know?
Likely it's $1,250.
Is it possible for us to waive that fee for nonprofits? Because I see that, you know, there's a difference between an entity that's coming in, and for, you know, a commercial entity, I think it's a bit more sustainable. As a nonprofit, obviously, every dollar counts. I'm just wondering, do we, as an authority, have the ability to waive that fee based on a certain designation of the entity? I mean, I suppose we can make any rule we wanted, as long as it's legal.
I was just saying, you could do whichever. Then the taxpayers eat that cost, because we have a cost to pay the planner to go through the process. We have to advertise in the paper, so we lose money at $1,250. So, but then I think the answer, Jeff, is City Council can change fees during the fee structure.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Council, do we have any motions for this? Councilmember King?
A quick question. Would there be a way to still have this be some sort of conditional type use with administration approval, rather than Planning Commission approval?
City Attorney?
So if, if you wanted that, then what we would do is, we would have to take it out of being a special exception uses, because special exception uses are required to come to Planning Commission. So we would, I guess, make it into an accessory, add it to the accessory use section. So that would be, I guess, more of a policy. Where do you want the, do you want administration to be able to review it and determine whether it's, it's appropriate, or do you want Planning Commission? So if you want Planning Commission to, and there's an ordinance, then that, if you look at the, the ordinances for special exceptions, it goes through the, the guidelines that one would have to meet. It's, you know, compatible, it's, you know, with other, with other areas. I don't remember them off the top of my head, but there's a specific stat, ordinance section that, that provides the criteria. So if you take it out of being a special exception, then that would take that away. It would just be up to administration.
So if I heard you correct, there's kind of two places in our ordinances where we could have looked to modify this to make the change. One would require administration to approve it or disapprove it. The other would require Planning Commission, a separate body, to approve it.
That's correct. In, in the section I was referring to, that, that special exception uses, that's Article 26, so that's Section 2600. It goes through what the, what, what is a special exception, what the definition of the procedure, the site plan requirement. So that would be, let's see here, yeah, special exception 2600. Any conditions?
City Manager?
If I may, so you're making me have a flashback here. So when I first got here, every single sign that ever was put up in the city had to go to the planners and go through two months at least and pay the fee to do that. So when I first got here and they asked if I would do the sign stuff, it was like, only if we make that administrative function. Not thinking that would happen, but it did. So we've had precedent of making something but, but they gave the authority for the approval to administration, but had the same guidelines that the Planning Commission used to evaluate signs. So I would suspect that if you went that route, you would want the same background to be provided. It's just who makes that sign off ultimately. Planning Commission would save, obviously, probably 60 days, but you would want some guidelines, so it's not just willy-nilly, the administrators picking whoever wants one or losers. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was kind of my concern. That was my concern.
Yeah. For the record, I would like to keep it as-is with, it goes in front of Planning Commission. I know it might be a little bit more pedantic, it might take more time, and obviously will be a cost, but I think there's a benefit to transparency and having it come before Planning Commission, and having everyone have an opportunity to look at it, including City Council thereafter.
Yeah. Mayor Proton?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To set the public hearing for the limited retail in Section 1703, 1803.
Motion for support by Trent. Any other discussion? City Clerk, the roll call.
And that date would be September 8th.
September 8th for the public hearing.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Public hearing has been set. Motion passed. Moving on to Section 10, this is reports from our various boards and commissions. First is the historical commission, of which Councilmember Sage is on. Does anyone have any other updates? No? Okay, we'll get another one of those. Next one is Pink Creek Trailways Commission, which is also Sage. Anything? Okay. Planning Commission, Commissioner?
I got to get to my page here.
Councilmember Hauser?
Sure.
Okay, there it is.
Well, the good part is, is we've touched on a lot of issues that?
We have. A lot of them we've already talked about.
At the last planning commission. I'm going to focus on the ones that were not. There was a conversation about 401 South Main, that's DeMarco's Restaurant, construction of the upstairs roof dining area. We approved the site plan and special exception, and the payment in lieu of 23 parking spaces. The next was, let me see here, we talked about the limited retail South Street passed, and we also talked about the 120 South Main Street. That was a development at the, the old auto store, the collision shop. There is a conversation about developing a physical therapy store there, not a store, but a clinic, and there was some discussion, and what they're going to do is come back as a special project at the next available Planning Commission meeting. So those are really the issues that we talked about. The other ones were the ordinance, and the one was the retail on South Street. So that's your Planning Commission update.
Thank you. Sister City, I'm thinking this might be Councilmember Trent, since Councilmember Jones gets Principal Shopping District?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm getting assistance here. Thank you. So, yes, we met last week, last Tuesday, and LeAnn Scott, the Rochester Hills City Clerk, came to discuss the cemetery, because that was what she oversees, manages that process, and she discussed having crematorium monuments above ground, which were kind of interesting and a nice addition to their cemetery. They also discussed they were adding irrigation, which is a huge undertaking, and then she answered a lot of questions for our Mount Avon Cemetery Committee member, Councilmember Jones. So we also approved having Rochester Hills Government Youth Councilmember attend our meetings going forward. We meet every other month. And then David Ward from Ra-Ra, the Executive Director, came and presented the storyboard project for honoring members of our community for the, who sacrificed their lives for America on, and before Memorial Day. So he discussed that, and he's going to come back next meeting in October to give us more information, because we had questions. We don't have a whole lot to report yet, but it was very innovative, and we really liked the direction that he was going with it. And then it would also engage the public over a larger stretch of time, not just on, not for Memorial, not on the day of Memorial Day. So, as we know, both cities participate in the Memorial Day celebration, and last year we had a parade in the Mount Avon Cemetery to the Rochester Hills Veteran Park on Livernoy. So we discussed, Maggie Bobbets was there, the Director of the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce, and she has overseen and managed this, this Memorial Day parade event for several years now. But she talked to us about not going forward with it next year, but she will do consulting. So we're in the midst of figuring out how that will be, how we're going to, how the event will be done next year, but we will have it, and we will have both. City of Rochester, City of Rochester Hills will be having a Memorial Day event at the, that their, you know, at, made at Mount Avon Cemetery for the City of Rochester and Rochester, City of Rochester Hills at their Veterans Park. So that, we had a lot, we have a lot to discuss at the October meeting, and we'll take a deeper dive in the details and logistics of Memorial Day. deeper dive in the details and logistics of Memorial Day activities.
Wonderful. Thank you. I did have some conversation with Mayor Brian Barnett about that. And I think we both feel like we like when we do things together, and Memorial Day is one of the few things that we do together with each having our own service and the short parade route in between. I would hope we could still maintain that. We both feel like that's important.
Well, if you are coming to the meeting, I think next time, maybe you'll have more say-so and we'll discuss it. So we'll have more to discuss, so I appreciate that. Thank you for that input.
Yep. Anything else? Nope. Last one, we have Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Jones.
Okay. For the sake of time, we met on August 6th, and there's so much coming up. So I guess I'll just go with Rochester Post is October 2nd. We talked about the Halloween events. This year, Halloween will be at the farmer's market. That will be at the top of the parking structure, because we don't have that parking lot available where it usually has farmer's market. And I'm not, there's so much coming up, but I'll be talking about this before these all, these say. What do you think, Nick? We just talked about a lot of events coming up.
We'll see that council when they come as asks. So like Lon Yap and Turgis are coming one day, so.
Right, they're going to, yeah, we'll be coming in front of us for the Halloween event. Lon Yap and Chris Kringle will all be coming in front of us for approval.
Great, thank you. Public comment? Any other public comment for things that we haven't yet covered? I see a hand. Come on down.
When we talked quickly, just one thing, two things actually, on the stacking, we forgot we have a bus, a bicycle bus, a party bus. So when you talk about traffic getting stacked, see them on Main Street, because the traffic gets very impatient behind them. And they stack traffic up all the time because of their speed, which is not even, I don't even register it on my speedometer sometimes. Okay. Next, the Blight Ordinance. I did speak, or I had residents speaking to me from all sections of Rochester, and these were mostly the people that are in the older, smaller homes, that have been here a long time. And I will tell you, they have some concerns. I can't tell them, you know, they don't have concerns, but they figure, they feel, in a way, they're kind of set apart. I don't want to use the word targeted, because they're using words targeted and weaponized, because they're older. So they don't have that pristine look of the 800,000, 1.2, 1.4, $2 million houses being built. They've also, most of them have had a lot of longevity here. And they feel, in a way, it's another method of trying to kind of push them out, to get a bigger house built on that small lot. Because they feel driven by both Planning Commission, and I hate to say this, some council, that the whole thrust is to get more taxes in the door. And the only way they can get more taxes in the door, because the developments take a long time to come, is get that small house razed, get that 1.4 million dollar house built, that 1.2 on that pocket-sized lot. I told them they need to temper that, quite frankly. Like I said, those houses aren't going to be as pristine. Their next questions that came up was their perception. So if that is not a true perception, you can only prove it by your actions, truthfully. Okay? Because that's kind of a lot of perception. One gentleman was upset in reading this and told me he's going to put a no trespass sign up. He has the right. He can post a no trespass on his property. Because his fears are, is how is this going to be done? Because of history of what has been done before. Second-story windows, cameras, ladders over a fence, looking through a fence, or trespass. Are we going to have somebody assigned that's going to be patrolling the neighborhoods, looking? The click and fix is fine, but that is anonymous, I believe. So you're never going to know who or what. And we say, we're a friendly town, we're a good town, we're lenient, we do this. And we have been. We have been that way. But things change. And the change is not from the old, the change is the new, saying the old better fit in with the new. And that's how these people are feeling right now. We live in an older section of town. There's several older sections. They have great quaint character. They're not going to be cookie cutter. They're not going to be all the optic white farmhouses coming in. Okay? They're going to be small. So I think, I don't know if we're having a patrol or not. I don't know how it's going to be done. But then that brings up another problem, and brought up by people about micromanagement and overreaching. And what is the point or purpose? We've had micromanagement here before in the city that did not serve well, and we all know what we did with micromanagement then. So that is something I would caution about, because we're going to be, quote, "user-friendly." And as you attract more, we're going to have to really look at some things, maybe a little different. I don't know. I like the idea of coming back with a report. I think that's one of the good ways to do it. But again, back to personnel. We needed an officer, really, to help with just plain old maintenance. I was downtown a couple of weeks ago. I had a lot of family coming in from Pennsylvania. There were problems with meters. Six times, my credit card would not work, and I couldn't find other parking. My niece finally got it to work. There was not a problem with my credit. It's the meter. And I finally told her, if it doesn't work, I'm walking, I don't care, I'll just call the city. Another person had a problem, two meters down, was having a problem with the meters working. So if we need somebody to help with maintenance more, if we need someone to do more of that because of on-call and what has to be done, we need to kind of maybe look at that, because we're inviting more people here all the time, which means more problems, especially with technology. We all know how that's going to work. The next thing is, is with the, our fire department is charged with the ordinance enforcement, if I am correct, for most part.
Most part, yeah.
Okay? So how do we get someone to take on that type of responsibility? It depends how it's going to be done. So I don't know if you're sending out a patrol, looking, or if it's complaint-driven. And that's, I think, what the people are looking for, is a little bit like, I'm not going to be singled out. Because then they may single out somebody two houses down. But driving in the neighborhoods right now in the older sections, it's very detailed little list you have there. That's all I'm going to say. And a lot of people will probably try to do, out of fear maybe, repairs that might not be totally necessary, and I'll tell you why. It doesn't affect safety, health, or welfare of anybody, or the public. It's just older, and it's on their private property, where they pay the taxes and they own the house. So therein lies part of it, is that's why they came up with the overreach and weaponization or whatever. So I'm just kind of letting you know, those might be some pitfalls, but I think working through it might help. I still don't know how it's going to do it, but that's okay.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? All right. City Clerk, what do you have for us tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one election-related item. I've been working with the League of Women Voters, and it looks like they are tentatively scheduled a candidate forum here in council chambers for Thursday, September 11th, at 7:00 PM. They will be reaching out directly to all the candidates. So watch your emails, and confirmation of that will come.
And that is televised or livestreamed, right?
Correct. Coordinating with CMN to do the same thing that they do with the council meetings, and it'll be available on the website afterwards for review.
Okay, great. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, so continued commitment of the city to our infrastructure. I'm excited that the first foray of construction projects were done. If you haven't seen them yet, go see First Street. Basically, in two days of paving, unbelievable how that looks. The Fourth Street lot, which is the brunchhouse lot, we call it, in two days, ripped out, paved, striped, operational, unbelievable. And then the East Side curbs, contractor thanked God for the weather, it's been just rolling through, ripping out and replacing it. And we had virtually great communication. DPW's got notices out. We've got it all over the website. People have complimented them and the contractors for the work that's being done. So that's the first foray. Now comes Second Street, Third Street, Pine, Walnut, and Downtown, you'll see the rest of these going and continuing on the curb. So they look great and doing really quick. And then after Art and Apples, then our municipal lot gets done. So we're going to wait till after Art and Apples, so we don't mess up with them too much. So construction's going really well, so we're excited about that. That's it.
Yeah, lots happening. And I also like the signs downtown, noticing people that, what was happening in the DDA in terms of the construction. That was helpful. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember King?
Nothing, this evening.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, two things. One, thank you for that update on the construction. The lots downtown look really good, and, you know, we've talked about the parking lots need a lot of work, all of them downtown, so we're getting started. And then, well, and also I want to give a quick shout-out to the fire department. Last week or so, I was over at Cedar Brook, and there was a couple incidents, and the fire department was there, like, in five minutes or under. Very professional. And also just the different groups, very kind, nice people, really nurturing, trying to help people. So thanks, Chief, and to the fire department for a job well done. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Just one thing. I've met with Arts and Apples Group, Pink Creek Center for the Arts, about the festival coming up on September 5th through September 7th.
Great.
I have a list of people to thank for the work that they've been doing in our public gardens. I want to thank Janine Offer Crupp, the Chairwoman of our City Beautiful Commission, and Shirley and Brad Roth for working and managing the Dinosaur Hill Community Garden. Next to the community garden is a pollinator garden. It looks wonderful. They did, they pulled up a lot of weeds, they cleaned it out. It's next to the mini forest that Stephanie Burdo Smith and her children, Autumn and Brendan, were there last week, pulling weeds. And I want to thank the DPW for continuing to water it, and it's looking really, really well. So if anybody wants to walk by the mini forest and visit it, they're more than welcome to, and it's looking good. So we also have the Southern Wet Meadow, that on Sunday, Board Member Jessica Clauser and I went and planted more plants there. And in October, will be, there'll be a sign erected, explaining what a Southern Wet Meadow is. And that will be announced, and hopefully we'll have a little ribbon cutting. And I want to thank Colin Pettit for digging that area up that we needed, because I had gone there before with a couple of volunteers, and it was impossible to dig in, because it was so, the dirt was so compacted. So he got, he had it ready for us, so it's all in. And last but not least, the Mount Avon Cemetery Garden, Pollinator Garden. I was there on Saturday with Sarah Helfrich from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and also Carrie Marvin. And we spent a few hours cleaning out, clearing out the plants and the garden and the weeds. And the garden's looking beautiful, so I'm really excited about that, finally, because I worked on that for several years.
Councilmember Trent, once again, you've been very busy.
I have. One more, I have, yes. And one more thing, I wanted to thank the Rochester Post for recognizing that Rochester earned the national recognition from Main Street America. I know that Mayor Salvia had mentioned this, but I also liked that it was also mentioned to a larger audience in their newspaper on August 7th, because, and we are one of 22 communities in the Main Street, Oakland County, that have earned national recognition from Main Street America for ongoing, for their ongoing work to strengthen and revitalize downtowns through preservation-based economic development and the Main Street program. So that's it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Did I skip anybody? No, I didn't skip anybody. Okay. All right, so real quick, the Sense of Emergency short film, which features the story of the Rochester paramedics, that is out. It is going to the Holly Shortz Film Festival. I got to see it as part of a preview. It's very moving. It's short, it's 10 minutes, it's very intense, and it makes me, made me appreciate even more everything our first responders do. And I look forward to having a filming here, and we are going to want to tie it to some sort of call of action. It's very moving, and it just, thank you, thank you to all of our first responders. And then Wednesday is our first Walk with the Mayor, 7:00 PM, meet at the World War II Memorial. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. All righty. Well, somebody said 9 o'clock?